Good evening. This is a call to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectment and the Board of Health being held in the Town House Auditorium on April 29, 2024. It's 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person remotely using video conferencing technology. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. The flag. United States of America and your Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You have to fix that.
Fix the flag.
Yeah.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? Please indicate in the chat or...
Dalton, I guess.
I don't see Dalton in it.
He just got on, I thought. He was in the waiting room.
He's in the waiting room.
Now we can ask him again.
Okay. Anyone recording besides us? We'll assume Dalton is because he always does. Okay. First item on the... Do we have some minutes? The minutes of April 1st, 2024, regular session. All right. We had a public hearing regarding a septic variance. The government study committee was in to talk about their report. Great Horse was in. They changed the manager with their liquor license. We did take some action on the town meeting warrant. There's a budget review. Extended the ambulance contract. We talked briefly about the Board of Health Coordinator. We talked briefly about Vadar, which will be on the agenda again tonight. Municipal vulnerability. Steve Tyler was here and they're here again tonight. We had casino mitigation relocation. We talked about the use of ARPA for the Water District and various selectmen reports.
Motion to approve April 1st.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the executive session minutes of April 1st, 2024. It was to discuss police negotiations, police contract.
I have the fourth paragraph. I wasn't there, so...
Oh, yeah.
I probably didn't state that.
Is that okay? What's your...
No, I'm saying...
Oh, yeah. Right. Okay.
No, I'm sorry. I had to leave during the meeting. Okay, so let's say that's correct.
Right.
Okay. Make a motion to approve minutes of the executive session, April 1st, without release.
Second.
All in favor? All right. The next thing we have is the update on the quarterly update on the municipal vulnerability project. We have someone with us for that. Mary?
Mary and Steve.
And Steve.
Good evening. Steven Tyler with Howard Stein Hudson. I'm here with... Mary, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, Mary Monahan. I'm contracted with Howard Stein Hudson.
And I have a slideshow. If you'd like, I can run through it in share screen. Works for you. I think I'm sharing now. So this is our quarterly update for the town of Hampton Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness, fiscal year 24 Action Grant, the Main Street Bridge Replacement, 100% Design and the Green Infrastructure Conceptual Design. Our agenda is just to talk about the bridge design status, the bridge permitting status, the status of the Conway School infrastructure design, remaining community outreach meetings, next steps for the community, and questions and answers. The bridge design status, the 100% bridge design and roadway and traffic design was sent to the town for review earlier this month on April 11th. And that review period closed on April 26th. And we have received at least one set of comments today to date and are gathering the rest of our comments as of the first of this week. HSH will address those comments received and complete the 100% design, which is the final deliverable on the bridge design. I might refer to... I've inserted here one of the overall bridge plans, which shows the overall limits of work. All of the infrastructure stays within the existing town right of way. And... Sorry, that's me touching my mouse. Let's do that. All of the infrastructure is staying within the existing right of way. There is some slope work associated, you know, with the excavation and regrading as well as a minor driveway repair to the abiding property due to slight changes in the roadway profile. This plan here just shows a closer view of the bridge structure. I think one of the key elements is the change in the width. The existing bridge is kind of denoted by these existence steel channels, that exist in steel piles that were driven into the stream on the construction of the existing bridge. And so that was... That is approximately the existing bridge width of 16 feet and the proposed bridge width of approximately 32 foot square span. Our bridge permit documents, we're nearly wrapping those up. We're planning on submitting those by May 10th. But the permit documents are going to include a notice of intent that will ultimately be reviewed by the Hampton Conservation Commission and Danger Species Mesa Natural Heritage, and that will be reviewed by Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. There's a project notification form that will go to the Massachusetts Historical Commission. And the United States Army Corps of Engineer will receive a pre-construction notification. And lastly, the 100% bridge design would be submitted to Mass DOT for Chapter 85 review. The town review of the permit documents ends on or before May 24th, and HSH will address those comments and complete the permit documents by the end of May. This project is slated to plead in June. That's driving our timeline. As an update for the Conway School and their Green Infrastructure Conceptual Design, the Conway School students began work in April of 2024. We are maintaining weekly reoccurring mentoring and coordination meetings with the students. They, the students in the Conway School as well as Howard Stein Hudson with assistance from Mary Monahan, were out at our first community engagement meeting at Laughing Brook on last week, April 23rd. And the three locations being evaluated by those Conway School students are those selected from the last MVP project, and they include the Laughing Brook Wildlife Sanctuary Site, a site on Bennett Road, and a site within the right of way at near the intersection of Glendale Road and Ridge Road. This graphic just illustrates those three locations geographically where they're located in town. They're all within the same watershed, the Eastbrook watershed. The upper right is a photograph of the Glendale Road Site, and the bottom right is the Bennett Our remaining community outreach meetings, we have one date with two back-to-back meetings, and they are on May 16th at the Town House Auditorium. That first part of that meeting will be a green infrastructure presentation by the Conway School students, and that will be followed by Howard Stein Hudson and the team doing a bridge design review meeting. This will go over the 100% design, as will be submitted to Mass DOT for the Chapter 85 Project completion and follow-on steps. As stated, the bridge roadway and traffic design will be completed by late May, early June 2024, and the Conway School will complete their projects by June 2024. And the MVP grant line, grant deadline is June 2024, so we will be meeting that schedule. The follow-on steps for being shovel-ready. First of all, we're looking forward to receiving notification from the MVP for the fiscal year 25 grant application. Those notifications occur in August. And just to... I'm not sure how much we've gotten into this in the past, but the original application for this project was a two-year application that included the fiscal 24 year that we're working on now and the fiscal 25 grant year. And the MVP just awarded the first of those two years. So the project was set up to be able to complete all of those reviews during the second year. Because of the length and duration, it takes a Chapter 85 review is a fairly significant review. It just would not have been possible to do the design and complete those review timelines in a nine-month MVP grant schedule. And their way, whether or not the grant is received to become shovel-ready, we would need to complete the... We or the town would need to complete the fiscal year 25 final design and permitting filings and reviews as they had been described in that MVP year 25 grant schedule. And following completion of that design, and certainly work can begin in the interim, is working on other funding sources. Those fundings and sources include the potential being included on the tip, which coordination with your Pioneer Valley Planning Commission will facilitate that. MVP is a potential source, but we haven't seen bridge projects of this construction dollar size awarded, but they have awarded projects bigger, so can't exclude it. Small bridge is a potential funding source, although it's just a fraction of what the estimated cost for this structure is. Or using track and land, the combination of Chapter 90 and other local funds.
I don't make a sound of that.
The... Just wanted to share this slide for those watching, that we have the project informational website, and anyone wanting to find out more about the project can visit the website that's shown on the screen now, where we've shared this presentation with the town administrator and the executive secretary, should you wish to include it, associated with the meeting minutes. And with that, open up to questions from the board.
Good question.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mary. It's been a long process. One question I would have is, what's our obligation in all this? I know the goal was to mitigate the potential for hazardous situation, the potential for flooding, which occurred back in '05 and I think back in 1955 before that. So we needed to do something with the narrowing of that bridge there. Then we were also notified by the state that there's some repair needed on the bridge. The state never said the bridge needed to be replaced, like they told us with Rock and Dundee and the South Road Ballard Brook Bridge, which they're pretty emphatic, they need replacing. This one, they've told us, it needs repairing. With these grant issues here, how we've gone through it, do we have an obligation by signing up for these that we have to perform some action?
The short answer is no. You're not obligated to do a replacement per se, and I think that's what your question is. I can't speak for Mass DOT and why they're wording their letters, replacement versus rehab on the two bridges, though I am familiar with South Street and that structure, and I kind of feel like the difference is that structure had... Its substructure was also in bad shape and really couldn't be reused. You know, in a situation, this bridge does have this type of substructure that could be reused, and certainly the town could perform repairs at any time, now or past, present or future. But that, like you say, does not alleviate the concern with the potential flooding and the constr... Waterway. And so obviously, this was an avenue to where we advised and the town elected to pursue to try to get funding for a replacement structure. And the key element of that is like all the grants that have been awarded in the pursuit of this structure all require replacement because they will only fund the structure that meets the stream crossing standards and this structure does not. And so that's where the town has tried to take advantage of those grant opportunities to try to get a whole new bridge funded in that way. But that does not obligate you to take that path. If for some reason, funding falls through, but I certainly feel like, you know, replacement from your perspective is something you want, and I think Mass DOT is going to support that as well. And so, you know, at this point, it's a matter of dealing with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Mass DOT. You know, Mass DOT will certainly know that you're ready when you make your Chapter 85 submission in May, and they'll see where this design is at, and they can start considering that in both District 2 and in Boston. And it's just a matter of kind of pushing those buttons to get them to program the structure. And I feel like we have a very good chance of that occurring.
Steve, you had mentioned the small bridge program as part of a grant funding source. I seem to remember maybe a year or so ago that after the conceptual plans and everything came out that this bridge didn't qualify for that grant because it was too big. Is that based on the size of the engineering design? Or is that based on the stretch of the road or the river it's got to cross? Because I don't believe that grant's going to cover it now based on what we were told a year ago.
Longer now. Right.
I don't... I think if I had answered that question, I don't know who said that, I don't think it was me. So to qualify for the small bridge program, it's the span of the existing structure. Your existing structure is underneath 20 feet. We have asked District 2 this question, and this is what they told us a couple of years ago, that because the existing structure is under 20 feet, that's the denotation for being eligible. You would be eligible for those funds, but in the future, this bridge would not be eligible for that type of funding because they, you know, the proposed bridge is greater than 20 feet.
I seem to remember when Bob was here, you know, we had the conversation with you as well, that it wouldn't fall under that category.
I agree with Craig. That was the conversation because the South Road Bridge did qualify having shorter span. And that's where we're getting that bridge.
Yeah.
Getting the Rock and Dundee Bridge through, I guess, the TIP program, which... And just to say, this goes back to the thing, we've had 10 meetings on Rock and Dundee with 40 engineers from the state. They are pushing it hard. Marcus had 10 meetings on South Road with their engineering staff because they're pushing that hard.
Right.
But they're not pushing us on this one because they think of it as repair. You're making the point, it's a valid point, that if we want to stay ahead of our hazard mitigation in the future, this is something to look at. But us as a board have to balance the cost of replacement versus repair.
Right.
I charted last week, and there were some pretty big numbers in the different things. I mean, the actual new bridge was 1.3, some temporary flashing signs were almost 200,000. It was a $3 million project that, as a repair project, would have been a heck of a lot cheaper. So that's something we have to balance. The work you've done is terrific work because encompasses much more than the bridge, and for that, it's important. But I think going forward, me personally, if we didn't have a funding source that didn't include the basically local tax dollars, it might be hard to turn into a full replacement of the bridge when we have so many other projects in front of us. That's just my feeling.
I do understand that. If... It sounds like you're pretty sure that that's what I described, so perhaps maybe that was before I was updated by the conversation our bridge engineer had with the district on the small bridge. A couple of other things would have been in play at that time. You can only have one small bridge grant at a time. And so, and then that other South Street Bridge is, I think it's on the verge of potential failure, and then you have a number of residents that would be cut off from the town's entirety, right? Because to the south is just a gravel road that goes into Connecticut is the way I understand South Street.
But Steve, if you... One quick second. Dalton's here. I would caution that imminent failure thing. I don't think we've ever heard that from Mark, so I don't want that to be part of the reporting on it, so...
I agree. That's a strong term. I shouldn't have said that word. I should not have said that word. Let me just certainly retract that. That gives the wrong message to the public.
I'll strike that from the record, Senator. Thank you.
Because, I guess, just a difference in condition, right? That that one is in... Has more elements in worse condition than the existing structure.
Steve, if we continue on this path, though, and we don't get the funding, we don't have to... You're saying we don't have to do this. We could go to repair or... Right? We were going to seek... We were going to seek funding for replacement as much as possible. If it doesn't come through, we can do repair when the time comes.
That is correct. You are not obligated to carry through with the bridge design if you're not able to fund it.
Just to piggyback on that, is your conceptual design for replacement only, or can that be used for repair?
It's replacement only. It's the only thing that would have been eligible under the grants.
All right. All right.
So the next hearing is the 16th?
Your next forum is when?
It's just an open public meeting on May 16th, which is a Thursday night.
Pencil that in, Don.
Pencil that in. Fill up my social calendar.
Sure. If you're off the ATT by then, I agree by then.
Well, we'll see. Anything else for Steve?
I have no questions.
We have no more questions for this witness. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Hi.
Have a good evening. Good night.
Good night now.
The next item on our agenda is a dog hearing. So just let me get the paperwork out here. I don't have a piece of paper. Okay, this is a... This is a call to hearings. This is a dog hearing under Chapter 140, Section 157, nuisance or dangerous dogs. And are the... Is Joshua Lantiga? Is it? That's Lantiga. Okay. Is it Lantiga?
Lantigua.
Lantigua. Okay. I want to say it proudly. And also asking if Stacy... Okay. Stacy, George Black is here. Okay. And Shelley is here. Can you all raise your right hand because we have to take the testimony? I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So everyone's being sworn in. So basically, this is a nuisance dog hearing, not a dangerous dog hearing. The dog hasn't attacked anybody, any other animals, or anything like that, right? Okay? And the complaint is that the dog is continually on Lantiga's property and defecating on the property and disturbing your dog. You're a dog?
Yeah, we have three dogs.
You have a dog? Okay. And what was the latest incident, Shelley?
So I have a... Josh, what was the latest? Has it happened since?
Yeah, so I have a couple of dates here. The last time was April 25th. That... Well, he was on the street on April 25th. Uh, April 21st, he was on the property.
Stacy, is your dog licensed?
So I thought that when you did the census and you put your dogs on there, I thought that was the license. So Shelley informed me that it's not, and I have no problem doing that. I have a copy of his rabies shots. Um, so my dog has never left our yard until they moved in with their dogs barking down below. We did buy a collar, electric collar. We're waiting for it to come in. I put a rope in, but my dog keeps ripping through my screens of my house. And my dog doesn't do that unless something is outside, so I'm not sure. There's not... There's lots of dogs that wander our property. I'm not saying that my dog never got out because my dog has gotten out, and we chased him and looked for him or whatever. And I'm taking, like, I bought the $500 collar so that he can wander my property. My son is... It's his dog, and behind my house, there's 36 acres. They walk it with their dogs when they're not supposed to be on our property. There's no trespassing signs all over because it's the tower. And I feel like that's why his dog started wandering down there is because they brought him up. His wife came up one day. She was walking with his mother or her mother, I don't know which, where their dog came onto my property and started growling and going after my dog, where I ran outside, grabbed my dog, and brought him in.
Weird.
I didn't even know there was a leash law on the end of it.
There's not.
I thought it was that if you could call your dog back, you were okay with your dog.
Under control.
We have 38 acres, and you could even ask Dave Moore that used to live there, never had a problem with my dogs wandering down there.
There actually isn't a leash law. The bylaw says that the dogs can't run at large. They can't go beyond the boundaries of their owner's property unless the dog is either is in sight or under voice control and does not trespass on residential property. So those are the kind of rules. So... And when you're walking your dogs, are they unleashed or are they...
So I think the day that she's talking about, Loki came down into our property, and our dog, you know, went over the deck, which we've made adjustments to the deck. We paid like $3,000 to have a fencing area for our dogs. And she went up there. She was over the pool area. She went up there to get our dog, and she said, grab your fucking dog. So that's the first time that we've ever had like negative communication from them to my wife or to me. But as far as like the property that's behind there, as far as I know, they have three acres, just like how we have Shirley, right on three acres. And we have a trail in our backyard that goes to the top, which is where their house is at, by the way. And then there's the power lines. A lot of people use the power lines, so I don't know if you saw us or somebody else. We have gone up the power lines before. But as far as your dog coming down, it still happens. It has been civil... We moved in 2020, and I've been nice. I've brought your dog up before multiple times. I've talked to you multiple times, and I've been nice until a couple of weeks ago, you weren't having it, and you shut the door in my face. So that's when I called Shelley and asked her to report it. And then I started keeping track. I bought my camera so I could catch the dog, handling evidence that he's coming in our yard. So I mean, the whole point is like we're doing what we need to do to keep our dogs in our house, and I've never seen Loki with a collar on. So like, you know, I've asked you and I've told you, we're trying to grow family. My wife is pregnant, so I don't want to deal with issues with her dog or our dogs jumping over or whatever the case is, you know, so we don't have an incident. My mom comes over to take care of the dogs when we're away. She's elderly. She can't go up a mountain to go get our dog because Loki came in our property and my dog's chasing him, you know?
So you said Loki... Loki is your dog's name? Has a collar?
Yes, he does.
So you have an electric fence now?
So we're waiting for it to come in.
So I ordered...
But he has a run that he's on.
Yeah, halo collar, three will be coming in. Yeah, halo collar, uh, three will be coming in. Hasn't given me an exact delivery date, but was ordered probably five days ago, five, four days ago, or no, actually more than that. I could check the delivery date.
So is that an electric fence or a wireless control?
So it's an electric fence, but it's like a GPS driven one, just because of the, um.
But it's not a buried wire like a normal one?
Not like an underground wire, but it's this one. I will walk a boundary on the property line. So like, like she was talking about, there's the, um, I think it's seven acre plot that we have. And then there's two fifteens that are my father's property, uh, which are the power lines.
Which Mary Lou left.
My, my grandmother, my father. Um, so the property line, the tower that they walk up is my dad's property after crossing ours. And then the power lines are also our property, except the bottom part where they're walking on Neil Flynn's property.
No.
Or your property, I'm sorry.
Neil, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know which ones it was on the thing. But yeah, I even checked the property lines online. I checked the markers, so I know where they are. Um, like you said, our neighbor Dave used to live down there. Um, yeah, I mean, his dogs do anything come up. Never our dogs coming up.
So how does it work to keep the dog on your property?
So it's never been an issue before.
No, no. How does the collar work to keep the dog?
So it just GPS location has the, um, I'm going to set the boundary properly.
So we have to walk the property line.
So it sets it.
And we have to, like, tag the thing in there, you know?
So you program the collar to say if he goes two hundred feet, he gets zapped?
Yes.
Or gets a phone, he's get a phone call or what's he get?
It'll be, it'll be, I think it's one.
No phone calls.
One, one morning beep. If he keeps going, two morning beeps, and then three, he gets shot and has to come back.
How old's the dog?
He's, um, two and a half.
No, 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 no.
Three?
Three, three.
Do you have to train him to respond to those beeps to, to know that the one?
There is training with it, um, that it, it comes with. Um, we've, I've had like dogs on electric collar before and I'll know if there will be much training. I, he's not the toughest dog ever, so I think one shock kill, he'll learn. But there is like a training thing that, uh, comes with, like a video of all of the training and with the noises.
Shelley, do you have anything to add? Do you think the collar will work?
Uh, I mean, it's a step, but we have the collars too. And if you don't do a lot of training, like for my black lab, he doesn't care, basically. So we really try to keep my black lab in the, in the deck area and the fenced-in area.
Does he have the same type of collar, that same kind of type of system?
So we have the five collar, so it's like a GPS collar. Uh, so if they get lost, it'll tell, show me on my phone if they ever get lost. But, um, I have another like wireless, uh, electric fence that we tried and he just doesn't respond to it. He, he just powers to basically. Um, so we kind of gave up on that. But the only times he's been out is basically chasing Loki. And we made modifications on the deck to race it up, and we covered the front, uh, so he can't jump through.
What type of dog do you have?
A Chalk Lab.
Chalk Lab, so. And you have a lab?
Yeah. Their dog is a nice dog. It, I've pet the dog before multiple times. Like I said, I've walked it up there. It's a nice dog. I just don't want to deal with the issues and a herd falling or something trying to like catch a dog or digging into a fight one day. They also have other dogs. Um, they, I don't know if it's like a yellow pimple mix or something like that. I've never pet that one, but that one's barked at kids on our property and has came down several times, not, not as much as Lori.
So that one's a rescue dog that we just got. And it doesn't leave our side, so there's no way that it was down there. Um, we have, we had, um, a little hot dog that recently died, um, three, four days ago. Um, that was the dog that used to follow with Loki, a little tiny hot dog that was overweight. And he would wander with Loki around our property. Um, but he hasn't wandered in six months. Um, he got fluid in his lungs and he was like paralyzed from the back legs and could barely walk. Um, the pimple is going to second chance. Um, I literally picked it up for my daughter as, um, uh, somebody for her to have. Um, she has a lot of issues with depression and it's definitely not the dog. As soon as we got it home, I tried to call the lady and the owner of her shut off. And we went back to the park and numerous times and we can't find the lady. So if the dog is going to second chance, it's very skittish. It's, it has to be beside you all the time. We can't get it in the car. Um, it barely goes outside. It sees a leaf, um, flowing in the yard and it comes right back.
That's not the dog in question, though, right? It's only that one particular, one particular dog.
Well, so the yellow dog has been down on our property with Loki.
So. It sounds like this, you're planning on rehoming that dog somewhere.
And the only yellow dog that's been down there is my son's girlfriend's dog when the dogs are outside and we're outside with him.
Right. So bottom line, your lab on your property, your lab on your property.
Yes.
And you're efforting it by the new collar, you're hoping your plan is that will assume it. You're saying it's a good plan, but your personal experience, there might be difficulty with it. But, but you hope it works.
Yeah, at the end of the day, like, if Loki comes down and wants to the blue because he gets loose, just like if our dog gets loose. Like, I would love to have no problem to go to your land and get my dog, so I can get him back home, same for you. But I mean, I've never seen you guys coming down to get Loki. So at least now you're kind of making an effort. So this has been going on for three and a half years. So, and it's came down to this because you closed the door on me last week or a week ago.
He's come to my house three times. First time was to tell me that his dog was aggressive and that we needed to keep our dogs in our yard. The second time was fine. He came up and told me my dog was in his yard again. But my dog was laying on the couch behind me. And then the third time he came up, he told me that he was going to take care of Loki. And that's when I got aggressive and shut my door.
I have never said any of those words.
Okay. Well, it sounds like good collars make good neighbors. Not to jump in, Shelley, do you think this is the course of action that hopefully will provide some closure here?
Yes, as long as the collar works and that's sometimes they don't. Many other dogs, so you gotta try it.
A lab can be pretty aggressive and a shock may not do it. You're saying that's happened to you. That sometimes the lab will run right through the shock.
Yeah. So I mean, it's, it comes down to training. But I mean, like I said, it's a step and that's kind of what I wanted out of today is let's go forward. I want to continue to be in civil. I don't want any more issues. We've had issues with their family before. Golf balls hit into our house when we first moved in. After we requested a dog hearing, somebody threw three eggs at my house. So, you know, I don't want to continue having issues. And like I said, if your dog gets loose or goes through the fence once in a blue, it's fine. Just grab your dog and make an effort. That's what I'm looking at today.
So you're gonna get your dog licensed. You're gonna have, you're gonna take care of the collar. And you're gonna make every effort to keep the dog off of their property. And you're gonna try to keep your dogs off of their property.
And, and, um, please. Because I already told Shelley, I don't want them up on our property.
Well, you just said that.
Oh.
Their dog.
On top of the tower part because my dog smells their dog. And, and that's what we're thinking is, is why he's wandering. Because Dave had his dogs down there. He never brought him up on my property and we never had an issue. And let his dogs run around.
Your dog, your dog off of their property, your dog off of their property.
Yep.
Collar and licensed.
Yep.
Right? We'll, we'll send you a letter.
Okay.
Thank you, and also thank you for being very civil together.
Right.
And I appreciate, we appreciate that. Thank you.
If the motion to close the hearing wasn't truly a hearing, it was just.
I don't make the motion to close it anyhow.
Second.
All in favor, I can get him out of here. Let the dogs out. And anything?
It's been a couple of months. How long has it been?
In charge of this, he's good with these things. He doesn't love to read it, but just go again. New collar firefighter.
Good evening.
Good evening. What do you got?
Tonight we have a new applicant for the collar fire department, um, Thomas Maderas. He lives in Wilbraham on Stone Hill Road, so he's in, uh, required life. He has a little bit of experience from, um, when he was in college. He served with Blanford Fire Department. Um, so we're looking to have him accept as a probationary firefighter, which is, you know, one year. Must be attended the academy.
Tom, what you do in, um, Blanford?
I was a volunteer.
Were you active? Did you get called in on anything? Did you participate in any of their calls?
Um, very small town.
Yeah.
Farther than, yeah, I'm done. Um, I was a college student when I did it.
Yeah.
So, um, we were kind of the guinea pigs in the program. We went up there and achieved, we did whatever I needed help with. Um, got out on some calls. We did a, um, training through our chief. He was an instructor. Um, so I did that for two years.
Obviously enjoyed it if you want to continue.
I did. I did remember.
You worked full-time at Vernon?
Have you attended some of the, uh, training or, you know, scoped out?
We asked to be accepted before we were involved.
No, I didn't know if he'd like, as a guest type thing, observed what was going on or wandered in.
He, he has gone to, he did participate, um, high school with, um, Joe Moore, our, our favorite. So he knows, you know, they have that camaraderie. They play football team together. So we do have, you know, use Joe as a reference.
Pronunciation of your last name's Maderos?
Maderos.
Well, I move that we appoint Tom Maderos to, um, call firefighter probationary under the direction of Chief Bulon. And all certifications as needed.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Sorry to put you through the wringer like that, you know?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Tom? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we have a, next thing is the conservation land tax credit. And let's see, Sheri here. Let's see, Sheri or anybody here. Do you know if Sheri's coming?
I told her to turn.
What?
A little early, but.
Seven minutes.
A little bit early. A little bit early. We can knock off the national grid thing pretty easy and stuff like that. What do you want to knock off?
The national grid, these places, I think.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
We got the information from Rose. We can move it up the national, the national grid license agreement.
This is, um, this is for the EV unit at, uh, the, uh, what's this here?
At the senior center.
At the senior center.
Yep.
And then we'll have to eventually go to the town meeting for an easement once they get the location and everything.
Like the different land.
Right.
Yeah. So based on the fact that the, uh, town, town council has reviewed this, Brian as well, I've moved to, uh, grant the license uh, for the EV charging station and underground distribution.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
I got three signatures.
Thirty seconds.
I got to sign here.
We need just one copy?
Yeah. We only got one copy to sign?
I got one, you got one.
You have the one to sign down.
You only need one copy though, right?
Maybe you better come.
Motion's real quick. I don't think they're. Sounds like a motion.
We'll review the warrant, the warrant motions. Let's skip ahead a little bit while we're waiting. We're gonna do the, uh, review the warrant motions.
The only change I had, well, a couple of changes I mentioned to Brian. Typically, the enterprise fund is the board health.
Yeah, I've edited. Yep.
Oh, okay.
I've edited a copy for myself.
Oh, well, he's got the new copy. We don't.
No, I just edited it like this.
I think what John should do, Article five for enterprise from board of health.
That's what I was saying, yeah. And then Don Collins for the senior center.
Yeah. Don can do number four because he likes all those long numbers.
You're giving that one up?
Well, I gotta do the, the fire station one, I think.
So we do four? Four is the spending limits for revolving funds?
Yep.
And then I gotta, I gotta.
All right, I'm gonna change that to me. And then I'm gonna put John on.
Four.
Five.
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 Nine. I would typically be the chair of the library. I don't know if it's Kathy or, she's Kathy Hudson or Kathy Rochford this year. I don't know.
Yeah, trustee. And then you said Don Collins is gonna do eleven?
Yes, senior center.
What was that?
Greg, do you want John Plaster to make fifteen or thirteen or?
Either me or him. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
And we, I can discuss that with him.
Okay.
And then, um, we have, we have what? Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen?
Yeah, I don't know if you're like.
Cause I, I think.
You, him, maybe even Paul might do one.
Yeah, maybe I can get Paul to do the long one.
Right. He'll take number fourteen.
Yeah.
Is that, that's correct? You want to take in, you want to take no action, correct?
On Article fourteen, correct. Yeah, for the fifteen. Uh, thirteen, yes. Then fourteen, no action. And then fifteen is, yeah, we, we'll take action on that too.
And sixteen, is that the right motion?
Pretty much longer than that.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there'll be a little explanation, but, you know, that's the motion.
I just want to make sure we have the right main motions.
Yeah.
And then eighteen, I think will be either me or, um, Mark Barba, I would assume.
What was the second name? Sorry.
Mark Barba. He's the chair of that committee.
Yeah. Overly reserved turned out to be pretty good for helping with some of these warrant articles. Overly reserved turned out to be pretty helpful for.
Yeah, yeah.
Did, did they approve that?
Their meeting's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow?
Yeah.
They've been socking the money away for.
Oh, people asking for abatements, sort of had a good year, whether.
Then I'll read twenty, but the committee's gonna give their own informational thing. It's the chair for fiber optic.
Okay.
Twenty. Pickup truck, John, you want a pickup truck?
Yeah, Mark can't do it all. And she doesn't.
You think Mark?
No.
Oh, Mike doesn't want to tell, right?
Do you want, do you want the twenty-two or Michelle?
Well, I think if she's here, she, she should do it, right?
Yeah.
Michelle Boudreaux. I mean, she's the chairman of the school, chairperson.
She has riches to do it, but it might be in Thailand, Peru. You never know. Zoom in for her. That guy has a great life.
Okay, twenty-three will be the dormancy study committee member. Twenty-four, we dormancy study committee. Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Seven.
Twenty-seven. No, twenty-seven, yeah. School resource officer.
Yep. Clear.
Twenty-nine advisory committee reserve fund.
Tom, what do you got, like one?
Yeah, well, you know, at my age, the up and down thing is.
Is that what it is now? But you're, you're okay to golf.
But I'm okay to golf. Yeah, I won the rule my golf game. Only nine holes today, except though, right?
Well, that's all I was permitted by the.
If you want to take resource.
That's the best way to.
Go right ahead, Miss.
By the way, under a hundred. Advisory member, uh, has to preserve fund for advisory, also stabilization and advisory on the use of the tax rate.
So and then same thing we talked about is that when we get to the fall town meeting, we gotta make sure we add that fourth article there. Because we don't have the in and out separate articles for stabilization.
Right, right, right. Right.
Okay. So that is the, we agree with the motions, we agree with everything. So I guess we should vote to approve the warrant so we can all sign co, do you have multiple copies of the signature page?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll make a.
Well.
Kind of like done. I mean, we need to be done this week.
I know. It's here someplace. Okay, okay, okay. You have like seven copies, Laura?
Yes.
Well, if we sign the warrant, it has the ballot questions on there.
Let's wait to sign the warrant until the end.
But we have to, we only have so many days, right?
Right. I guess the question is just because it's on a warrant and what happens may take no effect. Where is that copy of? What's the actual wording at the back of it?
It says that. The actual wording is, I don't know. Well, because they don't have, they don't have the beginning, the first part of it.
Yeah, so three and four. I mean, we're, I mean, we're already talking about we're leaving this one up or taking no action on, or are we leaving, or are we taking it off?
Two coming off.
We're taking two off, right?
Yeah, because it's not, it's not pertinent. It's not going to affect, right?
I guess we didn't fully explore that. If we, if the first question fails at town meeting. Good question.
When do you have to print the ballot?
I wanted to print them already. We just got a request for absentees, but I was directed by the elections division not to print them yet because I wanted to discuss this with the panel first.
Yeah, well.
Well, what's our, what's our posting deadline? It must be posted, is it 14 days before town meeting?
The ballot?
No, not the ballot, I'm sorry, the town. We have the, the warrant needs to be posted.
Seven days.
Seven days, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we, so, so we could still sign this next week?
We could, yeah.
Or we could come in and sign it.
We could vote to approve it and sign it anytime before next week. Right. And have the time. Barely.
You know, and I don't think, if, if the questions are going to come off, I don't think we want to sign.
Right. Until the fresh copy shows zero.
Right.
But I did want to touch on that just. We were talking about taking no action on the second, on phase B.
Second, right.
But game, gaming it out, what if first question, pump house improvement fails at the town meeting?
Then why would second one pass?
I'm saying, would you want a chance to lobby for the second one and bring it to a ballot? Otherwise, we're doing nothing to fix the pump house.
I, I would like to think that it's a safety concern that people wouldn't vote it down based on the.
I don't.
I, I just hear what you're coming about, but we're also supplementing it with the ARPA. So it's not like it's a, a big expenditure.
Yeah, I agree. I think we have a powerful argument for it too, but we could still leave the question on, it just has no effect.
I just think it's going to muddy the waters and people, well, what does this actually mean? What are we voting for? And people are not going to know what they're voting for.
Okay.
Without any information.
No, but I'm only saying it's a bit of a safety net, like, is all I'm concerned about because the pump house work has to be done.
Correct.
Right. So.
But if, even if the people vote yes on this question too, they still have to vote to approve the funds at the next town meeting.
No, I was saying that gaming it out, say the first thing at town meeting, pump house improvements loses at town meeting.
Right.
And we were talking about taking no action on the second part.
Right.
On the floor right there, you could go ahead and decide not to take no action. Let's go ahead and move and do the real question so that the ballot question would have the validity. It leaves your options open, that's all I'm saying.
I just think that's a very, that's a very slim chance of the second.
I don't know if I just want to keep it open.
I, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, if the first one fails, the second one's not going to pass.
Okay. We're going to use it for explanation then and possibly do this at some other time?
Yeah.
All right.
When do you have to print the ballots?
This past week. I should have had them printed again because I had a request on Thursday evening for absentee ballots. So I've been waiting to discuss this with you.
We'll revisit that when we get down to the ballot question.
Are you talking about moving questions from the warrant article or from the ballot? I'm, sorry.
Moving questions from the ballot.
Okay, they haven't been printed yet. As far as the override questions, the selectmen have the authority to put them on if you want to take them off because they haven't been printed yet. That would be at your direction as well. The other two, because it's under the law, that they can't go on the ballot.
Well, we don't know, we don't know about that, but it's.
I'm sorry?
We don't know about that, but.
Well, so we'll talk about the first part. At the direction of the selectmen, you can put on the override question.
Yeah.
So if you want to leave them on the ballot, that's okay. If you want them taken off, I want to know that because I really would like to print them tomorrow with those absentee ballots up.
All right, so I think we should strike question two on the ballot then, fine. So first things first, let's take off question two, which is the override, sorry, the dead exclusion.
Water district, correct.
Now our question is with the.
Question why, obviously.
Three and four on the, on the ballot.
All right, now we're going to talk about, also do you want me to vote for the, to take two off?
Yeah. Well, we haven't closed the one, so basically it's just modifying.
Yeah, just modifying the one. Then do we want to touch on those now or are we going back to those?
I think we're going to do that.
Let's share your groceries here.
Give two seconds.
All taken. All right, what's your pitch?
Oh, um, I'll just give you some maps here to tell you what we're, what I am doing. This is with me and my husband's land on 179 South Road. We purchased our neighbor's farm and we have put conservation restrictions on the land and sold some of it. And this piece we're keeping and we wanted to put conservation restrictions on it. It is lot E. Do I have the right one here? Yes, it's lot E. Oh, here, I circled it. Lot E here. So, that's the same thing.
Oh, I got to circle them.
Okay. So this is the one. So, um, so.
We'll take one more, Sherri.
One more, okay.
Give them for Brian.
There's no frontage on this, huh?
Yeah, well, there is a very narrow frontage, 60-foot frontage.
Is that a large lot qualified or?
Yeah, I mean, very difficult. You have to go way, way, you have to cross the stream and go way back. So it's a very difficult lot to develop and we want to put conservation restrictions on it. And, um, it helps to finance what we, the purchase that we did to basically protect most of it. That land is open to us because it is part of a large wildlife corridor and has a lot of environmental significance. So it goes up to the top of Pine, to one of the peaks on Pine Mount.
I don't understand. I'm not really familiar with how this works. Explain, what, what does a conservation restriction do for you?
So a conservation restriction is attached to a deed and it is a permanent way of protecting land. So that land can never be developed once a conservation restriction is on the deed. The state of Massachusetts, uh, to encourage people putting land into conservation, has a program called the CLTC program that stands for Conservation Land Tax Credit Program. And they will give, uh, landowners who donate a conservation restriction on their land to a qualified nonprofit from donating it to the miniature land trust. They will give you a half of that money as a grant, uh, half of the appraisal value of that land.
Okay.
So, um, it's a way to kind of fund the purchase of the land that we, we bought and to protect it.
So then, once the conservation restriction goes on, it's permanently on there?
It's permanently.
It stays with the deed?
Yes.
And then you will be donating the land to the, the land trust?
No, I'm going to be owning, so the, this is a, this, this program is for private landowners.
Okay.
I already hold conservation restrictions on 17 acres of the land that I own. And this would be abutting that and adding to the 17 acres that I already donated conservation restriction on.
Now, if, I'm sorry.
And so my presentation to you is basically a formality. It's a transaction between my husband and me and the land trust. And the reason that I bring this before you, um, and I've discussed this with our, our town council, Rose, is more of a formality to say, gee, you know, you can't do that because we want to put a school there or we need that land, you know, for another reason.
First right refusal.
So, yeah, so if you don't have any reason for that land, then I just have to have you sign off on a form that I have that, um, says that I can go ahead and apply for this through the state.
Just out of curiosity, if you sell the land down the road, would it go to the land trust at that point? Or what is it?
When I don't, so I could either sell it to a landowner who would then own.
The restriction.
Own all this land with the restriction. Or I may decide, you know, when I die or when I have to leave my land, that I'll donate this to the town if the town was interested.
Which lot is it? Is it lot 19 or? I'm trying to figure out. Look at the town map and the, what you have here. Right now, the town shows this is one contiguous lot here.
Yes, yes, I, I, I went before the, this was all part of Charlie's.
Right.
And so I then added this to my land.
Right, so this, so which lot are we looking for protection on?
This one right here.
But that's not a separate lot.
It's not a separate lot, but I'm going to, this portion, it's not a lot. I mean, he marked it lot E, but it's, it's part of my land, but these acres that are, that are, that are defined in a, I have a description of the meats and bonds.
That was my question back. You can do a sub DR, basically, a single lot.
Because I, we have five acres around the house that does not have a conservation restriction on it. And then the rest of the land around my house does have conservation restrictions on it.
Okay, cool.
And, um, did I send off the form that I needed to sign?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I did. Okay.
What does it take to lift the conservation restriction?
An act of the state legislature.
So we can put it on, but we need the state to take it off?
Yes.
Those guys?
That's convenient.
Well, I mean, the idea is to permanently protect open space. And that, that's the whole point of it and it's land that's the most important for conservation and yet the least desirable for development.
Oh, sure, but down the road, something happened, somebody says, you know, that 40 acres, I'm going to protect 38 acres and put a little two-acre lot at the entrance and put a house there. Somebody who could live there and I'll, I'm going to take care of the woods and stuff.
The only place to put a house would be, you'd have to cross a stream and go up a ways. It's, it's a very difficult, it would be a very, very difficult lot to develop.
I like that guy on early road, want to put the helipad in way back when, I remember. Before your time, Greg.
On the GIS, it shows it's a much bigger property. You said you've already divided that? Am I, am I looking at the wrong?
No, no, what she just said is it's, it is that part there, but she's just protecting.
I've already protected.
Oklahoma Park.
Yeah, I've already protected 22.
Okay.
I've already protected 17 acres.
That's, that's in the, further in the back then?
No.
Is it, just, am I looking at the right spot?
Okay, so where's my house?
This is the 20 dot one on the GIS. I'm just like going off map location here. Because that's what, that's yours here, it says.
Yeah, so my house is like right here.
Okay.
And, but this is not, wait a minute.
Because I've been looking at the map, the picture, it looks, it looks kind of like that slim spot.
Okay.
Looks like there's supposed to be a line there.
No, this doesn't.
You know, that dash line.
I know, so I'm like, I can't match it up.
Basically, it's Oklahoma with Nevada on top. There's some more.
Something doesn't look right. I'm not good at.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm.
Or is it this one here?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's this.
I know.
Here it is, right here. This is, this is already.
Okay.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, so this is, yeah.
Okay, so there's that line there, so there should be another line.
Yeah.
I got you.
There we go.
Okay, all right. So I was looking at the wrong.
John said, John said it's basically.
Nevada.
Oklahoma with Nebraska.
Nebraska, oh, yeah, you're right. I see that.
Nebraska's open for business and Oklahoma's not.
All right.
See a real problem with this.
You have a motion?
Not quite sure how it's worded, but I would move that the town vote to exercise a conservation restriction on the property as described.
Well, I can allow it.
Allow it.
But I mean, I don't have, do we have a really good description of the property?
Do we allow the restriction or we just?
It's not a lot, that's the problem.
We're just foregoing first right of refusal, right?
We're foregoing right of first refusal, isn't that?
Well, what do we have for a description of the property? I mean, because it's not a lot, unfortunately, it's part of a lot.
I have, I have a description with meats and bonds.
That would be needed because.
I can email you.
But John.
With all the meats and bonds.
If we're just foregoing the first right of refusal, we're not authorizing a conservation restriction. It's between her and the state in the, the program.
Right.
So it's not, not us.
I mean, so we are, you're doing a transfer and you're asking for us to.
Allow.
Waive the right of first refusal.
Yeah, to just say that.
I'll move to waive the right of first refusal for Himmelstein property as described in the agreement that the chair.
Himmelstein Bernstein.
Can't leave my husband.
You just said it.
What, the biggest Red Sox fan in town? Are you kidding? I would never leave Ken out.
Second.
Don't tell Rich I said that, though.
Any further discussion? On the issue?
This issue?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm signing here.
Tell Ken I never leave him out, you know.
All right. All right. Okay, the next issue is the ballot question challenge.
Hold on. Oh, are we going to keep a copy?
He's going to read.
See, but here it says we approve the conservation restriction. We're not approving anything. That's my, my question.
Well, you're proving us, me allowing to put a conservation restriction on it. This, this language is from the state.
That was kind of an emotion at the beginning, yeah. That was kind of an emotion at the beginning, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is this is just the form that the state gives us if you're ready. But you're allowing me to have one, I guess, is what they're saying.
We need copies of this somewhere along the line.
Would you mind? One second. Would you mind running down to make a copy and then we can give it back to Sherry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Easy enough?
All right.
That's easy enough.
Yeah.
Or you can follow her down.
About the ballot lock or the ballot question? What? Well, well, they can people can see you and can see you and hear you.
Like I couldn't hear you guys.
There we go. Move the camera. Want to move the cameras? Okay.
All right. So this, so I got a few comments here. So as you know, the the government study committee was was created by authorization of the October twenty-second special town meeting. And the moderator appointed a government study committee that was charged with studying all the aspects of the Houndham Town Government to issue a report with recommendations at the annual town meeting. And after working diligently over a year, the government study committee completed it and issued a report with recommendations. The government study committee presented their report and their recommendation. Several recommendations in the form of suggested warrant articles to the board of selectmen. And the board of selectmen acting under chapter thirty-nine, section ten, placed those recommendations of the annual on the annual town meeting for two thousand and twenty-four. Two of the recommendations was about changing the future of the elected town in the future sometime in the future. The elected town clerk to appointed town clerk and combining the elected collector and elected treasurer into one appointed treasurer collector position. And which required not only a town meeting approval, but the approval of the voters at an annual town meeting. The board of selectmen acting in accordance with chapter fifty-four, section forty-two C. Can you put that up? The first. Fifty-four, forty-two C.
Oh, yeah.
Short answer is no.
I have it here.
What? Short answer is no.
Short answer is no.
Which one was it?
Number should be the first one, one.
I do have a copy of it if it's helpful.
No, I want to put it on the screen so people are watching.
Just grab it from.
They can see it too.
What was the what was the citation?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, forty-two C.
Fifty-four, forty-two C. Deadline for ballot questions?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so fifty-two, fifty-four, forty-two C says not withstanding the provision of any general or special law of the contrary, establishing a later time, a state secretary shall not print on this by something that the thing that pertains to us is the second sentence, not withstanding the provisions of any general or special laws of the contrary, establishing a later time, a city or town clerk shall not print on a city or town election ballot any question to the voters for which he receives final written notice after the thirty-fifth day before such election. Okay. That's an important. We'll come back to that. Okay. So our the town clerk checked with the election lock in the Secretary of State's and they said that the town meeting could would have to approve the ballot question first. Although the law does not point say anything about the town meeting.
That law is for other questions. Town meeting is specifically in fifty, excuse me, forty-one, one B.
And what does that say?
Selectmen can direct those anything. That's can't against anything, but the selectmen can direct questions we put on the warrant. However, the the questions for appointed versus elected is by town meeting, and that town meeting is until the week before the election.
But that's not but that's not with section forty-one and section one B. Could you put forty-one, section one B up?
Yep.
Section forty-one B says that the board of selectmen, that if you're gonna change, any office or board except the board of selectmen and the school committee elected under the provisions of section one may become an appointed position or board by a majority vote of the annual or special town meeting and acceptance by the voters of the town at the annual town elections. Provided, however, that any vote by a special town meeting taken under the provisions shall take place sixty days prior to the acceptance of voters at the election. For the purposes of the section, the position of town treasurer, collector, taxes, and pursuant to section one, it may be combined with the position. It does not say anything about a it says if it's a special town meeting, it takes sixty days. It says nothing about the annual town meeting.
But it's that it doesn't say that these questions may could that can be put on at the direction of the selectmen. It says by acceptance at the town meeting, and the town meeting is only a week before the election.
Yeah, I know.
So the selectmen don't have the authority to put that on the question. So regardless of the timeframe that I was given when you directed us to put it on the on the ballot, the law says that it's only being done at the direction of the town meeting, and town meeting hasn't happened yet.
So what if the town meeting happens and they say to put it on?
It's still not. It's still. We don't have that thirty-five day window.
But does it say that it needs a thirty-five day window?
You just read the other one that says a thirty-five day window. This is at the direction of the Elections Commission.
Yeah, I know. I know. And you also know that the town council disagrees with that.
I I don't agree with you there because I spoke to Elections Division before I came down here. He said he had spoken to town council and she agreed with him on that.
No, she didn't. She sent me an email. So she differ her opinion differs.
We were told different.
And I can read the. Okay. So anyhow, okay, so then the there's two agencies of the Commonwealth. Can you put up the next slide? Which is three and four?
Yeah. Lawrence trying to get it.
I didn't realize.
So there's two Commonwealth agencies have a device with towns differently. You got that one?
This one's not picking up what he's refusing for some reason.
Well, the division of the division of local services. The division of local services. I'll have it here in a minute here. The division of local services says in nineteen ninety-seven, a legislature enacted general law forty-one, section one B, with the purpose whereby towns can convert officers or boards elected pursuant to general law forty-one, with the exception of the select board of school committee, to appointed officers without the need of special legislation. Those include infected by the legislation include clerks, treasurers, tax collectors, assessors, auditors, highway. The local process entails two steps. A majority of those present in voting at an annual or special town meeting must vote to make the desired change. Also, a majority of those voting at the annual election must vote to make the change. If a town votes to make the change at a special town meeting, the legislature stipulates that it precede the annual election by at least sixty days. However, the statute imposes no timing requirement if the change is to be made at the election at the annual meeting. That's the.
Yeah, that was not what was directed by the Elections Commission.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand how you were directed. I mean, it's good. This is gonna end in litigation, so.
I'm sorry, but if it if it's what the selectmen prefer over what I interpret the law to be, I'm gonna go.
So so the so also the ministry, the Department of Housing and Community Development says that the chapter we're talking about allows a vote of town meeting followed by a ballot vote at the annual town meeting slash election, which our warrant is the town meeting plus election. Okay. The other question is, and the town council said there's no precedent for this. And I would just like to point you out. Can you pull up Holland?
Yep. Talon.
Got it there. Okay. So this is Talon. The town of Holland at their meeting on May eighth, the town meeting May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, had had three had those articles on to see if the town votes to change the position of town clerk and to see if the town will vote to continue to combine to combine the position of town clerk. They voted at their town meeting on May eighth, and they had their town election with those questions on on May twenty-third, just fifteen days. The Secretary of State didn't seem to be bothered by that. Did he put Wilbraham up? That's Wilbraham. On May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Wilbraham had on their ballot to change the clerk's position to elect to appointed. And their town meeting had the question on the ballot. Just five days later, and the Secretary of State's obviously didn't have any problem with that. So. So I guess we're left with a couple of ways we can go. And the problem is with this particular thing, I think, unfortunately, it cast a cloud over the 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 entire thing. And I am afraid that people at the town meeting will be caught up in arguing about whether it should be on the ballot and not on the ballot, rather than the merits or the pros and cons of the of what we're what the government study committee is trying to propose. And that'd be unfortunate. So there's several options. We could proceed to litigation, which, of course, town council, like all good lawyers, fear litigation of any type. Right? Unless they get bill can bill for it. The government study could proceed with the warrant article. And then the select we could call a special election in thirty-five days, right?
Not. They can't call a special election. It has to be done at an annual town election. You can call a special town. Excuse me. Call a special meeting to put it on an annual town election. But you can't call a special election.
All right. The government study could go to the alternative route and amend their articles to say to go to this legislature. They could amend them, say, we go, you know, file a petition with the legislature. Or they could move to take no action and put it on the special town meeting in October. And then we would have the election in.
In May.
In May. So.
And as it works now, you can still have it on the ballot in May, as long as it's two thousand and twenty-five. This is the interpretation.
Yeah, but if you wait a year, people won't even know what we're talking about.
I'm just saying these this.
I know. You could. Yeah, you could put it. You could put it on. You could put it on this annual. You could have it at this town meeting and then put it on the two thousand and twenty-five.
Ballot.
But my huh?
Ballot.
Ballot.
Correct.
But my fear with putting on this town meeting, the whole explanation of why it isn't on and everything is gonna confuse people, and it may be to the detriment.
There's no reason.
Can you can you still do an explanation type thing that doesn't require a warrant vote at the town meeting? Like, I mean, can the government study maybe make an explanation?
Well, I would I would prefer. I think their best. It's actually it's their decision. What they want to do. It's their warrant article. It's their articles. So their meeting on May sixth. And I think that their best position would be to take no action at this town meeting. They could explain it and put it on the special town meeting in October so they could go on the ballot and. Does it have to be?
Annual election? Because we have the elections in November. Does that make any? Can you actually get onto that?
No, it said it could be special.
I think it has to be an annual.
Was that an annual town election?
Correct.
A motion could be at either a. The only thing was a sixty-day thing. If it's a special town meeting.
A special town meeting up to sixty days, and that would give plenty of time.
I would. It's a decent thing, except I worry about this is such a change. We always get the concern that, oh, my gosh, special town meetings don't have the full illumination that an annual does.
Yeah, I know. That's I know, except.
No, we hear it all the time.
I know. We hear it all the time.
I think we've said plenty of times that, you know, we need to run a town and having two meetings to tie up things.
So we need to run a town. That's what we need to do with this. And and I I think they could give an explanation at this meeting and have it on the special and then put it on the because don't forget on the special, we're also gonna have the question about changing.
Select board thing?
Select board, selectmen thing.
This is monumental changes for the town. It's not. It's not gonna go all in one thing.
No, no, but it needs a lot of discussion, and I just don't want it to get lost in arguing about whether it should be on the ballot or shouldn't be on the ballot. I think that's gonna get lost. I think it'd be detrimental to the to the the government study committee, and I think would be detrimental to the people whose offices are affected because people say, oh, the reason they're knocking it off is because I don't say this is the reason, but, you know, trying to protect their own turf. Well, you know, it's, you know, it's not what it's about.
All right, so you're thinking of leaving. You're thinking of leaving the things on the warrant so explanations can be given.
Right. The government study committee says move take no motion. Moderator say discussion. They can stand and say, you know, we're gonna put it on the town meeting in the fall. We're gonna have further discussion about it.
Okay, so in terms of then the warrant, are we striking questions three and four on the on the warrant? So we're leaving one question for a dead exclusion for the senior center.
You mean ballot, ballot, not the warrant?
It's listed printed on the warrant.
But it'll come off the warrant and then the ballot.
What do you think, Don? I mean, can you speak for your committee or?
I don't want to speak for the committee. We need it on the sixth, so.
Well, but I mean, for at least you you exist until the thirteenth.
You know, having gone through this and all this committee work and having worked with Rose and, you know, looking at section forty-one, one B and seeing the examples that you just put up, it just doesn't make sense to me. But at this point, we'll defer to whatever you guys think is best in terms of litigation versus non-litigation.
I think the way you presented it, Don, informational only in May, vote on it in special and then have it on two thousand and twenty-five.
It's a clean way that we know satisfies.
It's more transparent and procedural.
Right.
There's no reason it can't be discussed next year at the annual town meeting. It doesn't. It can be a warrant article doesn't necessarily.
Well, the warrant. The warrant article will be there and they'll say I make a motion to take no action.
Not for next year.
For next year.
Can't bring it up at the town meeting before the town election.
They may have another warrant on it for a further report. Remember, the government study committee had more things if they choose to stay on to bring up. That can be covered under their whole report. By the way, in the fall, we did this motion. You're gonna see a ballot question. This reflects phase A of our recommendations, and that can be part of the report.
And that means the government study committee might have to stay on a little longer.
Oh, I think they're more.
The study committee, our report is done. Our something is done.
Oh, no, there are cookies down there for your committee. So are we?
Do I need a motion?
Move to amend the warrant, striking the last three ballot questions, leaving only the ballot question for the dead exclusion for the senior center. And recommending that would be the ballot as printed by the town court.
Do we need? Is that an official motion? Because we didn't do an official motion on the other ones. Just because the warrant's still open. We're just discussing, right?
Well, right now, basically, that's our. All right, I move to close the warrant by striking the last three ballot questions as printed. Questions two, three, and four, leaving only question one, the dead exclusion for the senior center, and direct the board to sign that warrant posting in the seven affixed places.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call in a favor.
All right. We're gonna start on two thousand and twenty-five warrant as soon as possible, Don.
And that's why I know a warrant meeting after that.
And as far as the election goes, it's only gonna have that one question then.
That's what I'm saying. I'd like a copy of that meeting official. So kind of why do you print the ballots?
Right, it'll just be the dead exclusion of the senior center.
Thanks.
I don't think so. I don't think the motion actually changed. Oh, no, you don't print the motions anyhow.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
But the main motions, those articles seem to change, correct?
No.
Just a no action.
Questions? I don't think any of the warrant questions changes.
No, the warrant question stays the same.
Right, yeah.
You moved at the town vote to increase the number of selectmen on the town.
That's a move. That's a move. We don't say that.
Because that's how they're.
The select.
That's a warrant question. That's a motion.
That's what I mean.
The motions have to change, not the.
We're not into motions yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll close those up next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. Is the assessor's coming? Rita, what brings you?
I haven't seen you for a long time, Don.
Wow.
Fair enough. Got forty years of town clerk here.
Okay, next one is the is the assessor? Is it too early for the assessor?
Three minutes.
They were coming. I don't know. I don't know. There's a guarantee issue. All right. We'll wait three minutes. What else we got? Nothing.
Under under department things, I have a request for a a residential kitchen license from the Board of Health. No cookies, Don.
Really?
But they are doing baking at Three Colonial Village. And I think Three Colonial Village must be. Is that Ferko's House or the one behind it? What's the? No, I'm sorry.
Can we write in the beginning?
House or is the next one then?
Well, probably the first one. Probably Ginger's because it's gotta be three.
Well, three would be the first one, wouldn't it?
I would think, yeah.
Yeah, so it's gotta be the one behind it. Yeah. Okay, anyhow, Nickums?
What are the cookies?
I'm tired.
Nickums or is that after?
No, it's before Nickums.
Okay.
I think it's the first one on the street.
Ginger's?
All right.
That would be three.
All right, what we got? What we got here?
Anyhow, request for a permit to operate a residential kitchen.
When?
Sorry, Kitkin.
So does. Oh, yeah.
It's Polish, isn't it?
Kitkin. Did did does.
As recommended by as the health agent.
He he he.
He inspected it.
He inspected it.
Yes.
What was the date on this again?
Well, it's not just for the rest of the just rest of the year.
So they were they.
It's just, you know, adding for the other permits they have in town.
Okay. So are we? Didn't we vote to make them have to deliver samples?
You said she was gonna be making.
We we mentioned that before.
Is another baking thing?
Similar to that one on Allen Farmer Brown.
Yeah.
Spudleys.
Those things. What about is this Ingrid?
I don't know where Ingrid. Ingrid does it out of her house, right? I mean, she's also.
Ingrid.
Lobby.
Indulgence by Ingrid.
I didn't know that she did.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Yeah. She does phenomenal cake.
Some of those pictures are. We definitely need samples.
That's what I'm saying, you know.
All right.
Second.
Don wants those quick things. She's like, where are your offices?
Call in favor.
Aye, thank you.
Still want those samples.
I'll pass it on to the short timer in the health department.
Did they pay a fee for this?
Yes. Yes.
I got your dog license fee.
Have you pet dog?
No, no.
Oh.
Just texting Kelly, I'm texting Kelly, see if anyone.
Yeah.
Kelly can't make it.
Is that what she said?
Yeah.
Okay.
She can't make it?
No.
Well, I think we actually knocked off, everything off the, about this.
Is anyone, there's nobody in there, huh?
Don't count that.
Well, they really should be here for this.
Right, I agree.
You know?
Right. This is, this is a multi-department type thing.
Yeah, it's a multi-department thing, yes.
I disagree with that, but we'll go ahead.
I'd like to invite, Don, just a chair, I mean, this is, I'd like to say, let's put it on for next week, invite the treasurer as well, as well as the assessors, and let's have a frank discussion. We all have to be, but we can all be in the same room.
Okay.
The accountant too.
The accountant too.
The accountant too.
Sure. See you next week. Put them on at the beginning, Cliff likes to either, put them on at the beginning, Cliff likes, you know.
In and out, pepper cookies.
We're done for now?
Yeah. Thank you for your help on the ballot stuff, though. Hope it wasn't that.
See you in the parking lot. See you in the parking lot.
Is this the sharks and the jets?
Okay, we have a.
We have any selectmen bringing in?
Anything, selectmen's reports?
Looking forward to, quickly, on the senior center building committee, we have a, a early meeting actually next week to get together, where we've got the forum tomorrow night, it will be zoomed, the senior center building forum, we'll have.
I got the robocall.
Sorry?
I got the robocall, and the text.
Yes, but it didn't include the Zoom information, but I did put it on the website, so hopefully somebody like maybe Ted.
Can share it on Facebook.
Copy that into some Facebook groups, Ted, and. And we got a meeting next Monday to review, any questions came up on the forum, tune the flyer, and get ready for Mr. Collins to give the presentation at the town meeting. Uh, the committees, planning board's pretty busy with projects, both on the new developments on shaping road, et cetera. Nothing new on the solar as yet, not anything from conservation on that?
No, they're, they're, that may, they, that's put off too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of paperwork involved.
A lot of paperwork involved, there's some issues, they, I think the people have got, have got their own consultant now, and they've sent some things, there's some question about Indian burial grounds, and there's some questions about ridgeline, being on the ridgeline, I think, so.
We should, we should be meeting on the 15th on this.
Okay.
Okay. I would make a point that many of these people that are concerned with this, understand how hard it is for conservation, do this work, and even though it may not be this project, we would encourage anybody maybe to volunteer and be on the Conservation Commission, you get to work with people like Ted, who's an incredible person, right, Ted?
If you say so.
So, that's it for me.
Fiber optic, the fiber optic committee met last week, they voted on holding a community input session, a listening session on June 12th, which is going to be at TWB. They're going to use the annual town meeting just to kind of give that information, and then try to draw people into this community input session at that date.
If I could quickly also talk about the water project, and Craig, I wanted to bring this up with you. We're talking about bringing phase A to the town meeting, pump house, whatever. There's probably a part of that that requires an RFQ going out for a bid for the work, right? Since warrant articles at the annual town meeting don't take effect until July 1st, but we plan on using ARPA money, which is now not part of the, so to speak, raise and appropriate, I'd like to know, could your department work with Time Bond to get that RFQ ready? We certainly have enough money in ARPA to cover the RFQ part, and with the potential for companies to be full of work, it'd be nice if we got that done. Look, even if the thing fails at town meeting, that work needs to be done anyhow to get the RFQ together.
And then, but Brian also said we had to use ARPA funds by, was it end of December? Remember?
Obligated by.
Obligated by end of December.
Encumbered.
In, in contract.
Okay, yeah.
Obligated.
Obligated.
There's a specific definition, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, we, we can use, I think John Plaster, who's not here, was working with Time Bond to get a, a hard number.
Right.
So we knew how much that first phase was going to need to be appropriated from.
But I mean, just to get the RFQ out right now, we have enough money to pay for that, you know?
Right, but then however much that RFQ is, it's going to come off the ARPA funds, which is going to have to change the price of.
But isn't it already figured into the, I mean, the phase A? It seems like it should be.
Yeah, I, I'll have to consult with Time to see what he has, he's been submitting all that.
Let's not wait for July 1st for that part of the.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
Since the ARPA number seems to keep dropping daily, I know you're tearing, I was going to say tearing your hair out just on the sides, but, you know, coming up with the ARPA number.
Yeah.
And how low are we going now?
398, somewhere around 350 when it lands. Wow.
It was 450 when Bob left, and it's just.
I was just under 5 when Bob left.
Yeah.
Anything else for you?
All right, I'm, I'm good. No more news.
Planning committee met last Tuesday, the superintendent, the school committee had directed the superintendent to look into the possibility of moving all sixth grade to Green Meadows. He said that's not, not possible because of, of money and.
All sixth grade?
Programming, all sixth grade programming, and plus, you have to change the agreement.
What would they do in seventh and eighth, would be at Wilbraham Middle?
Yeah.
So much for the continuity of keeping grades, you know, in the same building.
Yeah, they could, you know, utilize TWB for grades five and six district wide.
Yeah, they could, and, and that was brought up, and, but now they're back to eighth grade at the high school.
So they went back to that.
Yeah, so, the, the, the problem is that the regional agreement has to change for them to have any options to do anything.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and there's no, there's no, no one wants to spend any, I hate to use the term political capital on pushing to get that done.
So, here's my thoughts, Don, since we're bringing it up in this meeting here, and now it's public meeting, so it's now available to the public. I personally believe, based on everything I've seen, everything I've gone through, and everything with my kids in the school system, that having three grades at Wilbraham Middle doesn't work. However, Green Meadows is underutilized. Going back to that, I think it would be beneficial to all stakeholders, kids, parents, if we had a junior high and a middle school. So you utilize TWB as your transition school, grades five and six, and then you put seven and eight at Wilbraham Middle, district-wide, both these schools, and then you have, did I say that right? Maybe it's nine, 10, 11, 12.
Yeah.
So, yeah, seven and eight at Wilbraham, five and six at Green Meadows, uh, TWB, so then you have two strictly, middle school, junior high, high school, stepping stones, and you're keeping everything level across, horizontal and vertical alignment keeps it all even.
What's the population of five and six district-wide, you know?
I, I did look at it one time, I don't have those numbers on top of my head.
I don't know what it is.
But I, I believe when I looked at it, I'm like, oh, that, this could work theoretically.
I think capacity, biggest we had, and this goes back, obviously, when building Green Meadows was a little over four, you know, comfortably. But the good thing is, like you say, the educational model is the key bar right there that is consistent in the grade approach.
And then, to Don's point, the regional agreement has to change for that to happen, but then you're not like, oh, well, my kid's getting no classes here, and they're getting them over there, and we got to cross town lines here, well, if you make it district-wide, it's a, it's a regional district.
Everybody's in the same boat.
So TWB, everybody's in the same boat, they're coming here for two grades, then they're going to Wilbraham for two grades, and then they're going to the high school. It's, personally, I don't know why that's never been explored. I think, you know.
I'll bring it up.
The administration has lacked that effort in looking into that possibility.
I was going back into my files back in 16 and see if that was one of the, I don't know if we had 132 like you did, Don, but we were up into double letters at one point, you know, in the, in the models when we were doing the middle school task force, we had.
And just to add on to that, if you're pulling grades five and six out of TWB, and you're putting them as a junior high, a, a middle school, I'm sorry, transition year, you free up space at Green Meadows where you could run more preschool programming.
Which seemed to be very popular as people.
When we were in the strategic planning.
Probably talked about, right?
Everybody wanted more preschool options, and even as you go now, if you look on the district's website, and they may have changed it this year, but when we were trying to sign up for preschool, they had a full-time option listed, but they weren't offering it to anybody, they had, they had it there, but they weren't offering it. It was more for the special needs kids that needed full time. But, you know, a parent going in sees, oh, full-time option, I'm going to check it.
Yeah.
No, everybody was getting denied.
Right.
Off my soapbox.
Okay, no, very good.
That's good.
And what's the other thing? Oh, the master plan steering committee is meeting Wednesday, and it would usually be at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
Just gives me time to.
Formulate.
Get out in the afternoon.
I got a couple things. So the town received $56,000 for the digital equity implementation funding, so that's, that's the activities that will be identified in that digital equity plan, that I think PBPC is working with.
And what can we use those funds for?
Whatever, well, within limitations, whatever's contained in that.
Okay.
Planning plan.
How much, 56?
56,000, yep. I was able to cancel duplicate fence order.
Very good.
Submitted the ARPA annual report that was due within the month. I submitted the EOI to see if we, to get some feedback on the TW, funding for the TWB conditions assessment, that, that's a Time Bond proposal, the, we can get favorable feedback on that, so I'm not sure where the funding source for that would come from. I was hoping it would be Road Development Fund, but they indicated that in FY '25, it's not going to be competitive, so we may have to rethink that.
The number for that was in the 50s, was it?
Yeah.
Don, and I don't know the answer to this, like I said, the money from like overlay reserve, can it be transferred back to another account? It's kind of the question, without action at town meeting, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, it would just have to be, it can only be swept into general funds. Yeah, okay.
Yep. Ambulance contract, that's fully executed, signed, so we're ready to go for July 1st for the one-year extension. I set up a call with Mass EP to explore, and John Plaster got back to me to have a discussion about the SRF funding.
Was I correct that Time Bond mentioned something about that in the past?
Uh, it's, it actually came from somebody from Mass EP.
Right, but I, I thought Time Bond knew of this coming, and I thought they had prepared John with information on it, I could.
Yeah.[1648.54]